Okay, good morning. This is a meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee. And the meeting is now called to order. I'm Danielle McCray, Chair of the Committee and also the Councilwoman for the 2nd District. In attendance, Committee members, we have Ryan Dorsey from, excuse me, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. We have Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District. We have Councilman James Torrance from the 7th District. And we also, not a member of the Committee, but we also have Councilman Zeke Cohen in attendance today. From the Mayor's Office, we have Natasha Mayhew. And we also have Nina Themelis from the Council President's Office today. It looks like we have Nikki Thompson today. And also in attendance, we have Matthew Peters, who is staffed to the Committee. Before we get started, just a couple of ground rules. Please stay muted until you are recognized by the Chair. Mute yourself when you are not speaking. Before you speak, please identify yourself, the agency or organization you are with, and also your position. And please speak slowly and clearly. After you are finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you are recognized by the Chair. And we do ask that Committee members and city officials do their best to keep their video on for the duration of the hearing unless there are technical difficulties preventing you from doing so. This is for transparency, so members of the public know that we are listening and paying attention. Last, for members of the public, there will be an opportunity for public testimony. You will have two minutes each for testimony. Today, we are here for City Council Resolution 21-0027R: Informational Hearing: Illegal Dumping. For the purpose of inviting the Acting Director of the Department of Public Works and the Acting Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, as well as representatives from the Law Department, the Health Department, and the Baltimore Police Department to explain how their agencies assist in solving the problem of illegal dumping in our city. The hearing format today, for today, excuse me, is as follows. We're going to have brief remarks from the sponsor of the resolution. Then we're going to have a brief presentation and reports from the agencies. And we're going to give Committee members the opportunity to ask questions. After that, we will be moving to public testimony. We're now going to hear from the resolution's sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Torrance.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, my fellow councilmembers and agency heads and the general public. I am Councilman James Torrance of the 7th Councilmatic District. Many of you may know that I represent Central West Baltimore, many communities impacted by ridlining and other health disparities. One of the emerging problems that's happened in the 7th District is illegal dumping. This extends from Handen under Falls Road to the communities in Rosemont, Hamlin Park, the back alleys of Cent Town Winchester, and many more communities throughout the 7th Councilmatic District, and even beyond that. This problem knows no boundaries or no borders in relation to our council districts. I ask that these agencies be here today, one, to tell us what your current processes are, but also embrace the idea of innovation and change so that we can deliver services to our communities in a different way, but also in an efficient way. And I look forward to hearing your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. We're going to move right into our agencies. And I do want to recognize that Councilwoman Odette Ramos has joined us this morning. So we're going to start with, you're very welcome. Thank you. We're going to start with 311 at this time.
Good morning, everyone. Of course, my name is Lisa Allen. I'm the Call Center Director for 311. And I'm going to kick off this hearing by just explaining how a service request gets entered for legal dumping. The agents in 311 have to really kind of probe the customer before an illegal dumping request is entered in the system because it very well may be a dirty alley, or dirty street, or dirty lot. So what we try to probe out of the customer is things like how much trash bags is it? What is the trash made of? Is it furniture? Is it hazardous waste? Is it more than five big bags of trash? Does it look like it's more than 100 pounds? Those things would qualify for us to put in an illegal dumping request unless the customer says, "I just saw somebody dump all their construction material in the alley." So then they can give us that information first. But if they call and just say, "A bunch of trash just appeared," and I'll use the alley as an example, it can be a street, it can be a lot, we will ask those questions. So if the questions qualify that it goes to illegal dumping because someone has seen it happen, and actually, if it's in progress, they should call the police. But if they saw someone dump and they've left, or if it's more than five bags of trash, if it's more than 100 pounds, if it's things like hazardous waste, construction material, bulky furniture, we then literally just put in an investigation for an illegal dumping, which goes to housing and code enforcement. They then go out and investigate, and then they will transfer the service request to the appropriate agency or person that needs to pick up or take care of the issue. They sometimes will look, and I'll let them talk more on this, to see if they can, in the investigation, to see if they can find any clues or anything that will help them try to identify who did it. So simply, 311 again triages the request that the customer is trying to make. If it's not clear, then we put in an illegal dump investigation that goes to housing. Of course, they take care, or they transfer to who it should be, or they take care of it. They then go into the system after it's been taken care of, and they close it, which should close the transferred service request, if they transferred it to Solid Waste, as well as the investigation. So, does anyone have any questions about how illegal dumping gets put into the system? Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to hold out questions until everyone has presented. Thanks so much for the information that you shared. We're going to move on to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Yes, Madam Chair, Acting Commissioner Kennedy is here on the line with us. If you could give me access to share my screen, the Acting Commissioner is going to take us through the PowerPoint presentation we've prepared.
Sure.
Thank you.
Stephanie, you should have presenter privileges now.
Stephanie, are you okay, or do you need us to put this up and just drive it for you?
Stephanie, you're muted. Stephanie, you're on mute. Chairwoman McCray, if we, if... Chairwoman McCray, if, is it possible for staff, your staff, to present?
We're going to, we're going to get it up for you, and we'll just tell us when to click to the next page. We're getting it up now. Please bear with us, everyone. Thanks for your patience.
No, I appreciate everyone's patience. Thank you very much. Sometimes technical difficulties come into play.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Good woman, good morning, Chairwoman McCray and members of the Committee, as well as our other City Council members that are joining us this morning and the public. I'm Alice Kennedy, Acting Commissioner for the Department of Housing and Community Development, and I'm here this morning to give an overview of DHCD's work around illegal dumping and what roles we play in the process in responding to this in the community. One, we want to make sure that, you know, in terms of a definition of illegal dumping as what we look at, it's the disposable waste on public or private property without the knowledge or consent of that property owner. And that also includes, you know, littering along streets and alleys, and sometimes can also be on vacant property as well. The, as we all know, illegal dumping impacts residents across Baltimore. It has health risks, fire hazards, decreases the...
Okay, Stephanie, it looks like we may have lost the... Looks like we maybe have some technical issues. Did you want to take over the presentation?
It looks like Alice is back, but I'm happy to take over. Alice, are you back with us?
I am. I apologize. This is...
I think it's this rainstorm that's coming down is messing with all of our Wi-Fi.
So illegal dumping can cost, you know, and be an impact on the community, as well as it comes with, for those that partake in illegal dumping, up to $50,000 in fines, five years of imprisonment, loss of a city-held license or permit, court-ordered community service, or other restitution for those costs. Next slide, please.
Alice, Alice, who are we?
I'm here.
Do we need to advance it further?
No, this is, this is good. This reviews what the properly legally weighs within the city that are available to residents as well as contractors to dispose of items. You know, we have regular residential trash pickup. We have the small hauler requirements with the license that is required to be obtained by the Commissioner of Health. And then we have the several DPW drop-off locations that are available to residents and contractors as well. Next slide, please. In terms of enforcement and violations, so the Department of Housing and Community Development, we have a special investigations unit that works within our Code Enforcement's Legal Section. And together, working with DPW, SIU responds to the complaints that are called into 311 for illegal dumping. The SIU team, you know, conducts daily proactive inspections of known dumping spots. We also respond to the SRS that are entered into the 311 system and complaints by the community. And we also are, due to investigative component, to building a case against illegal dumpers and bringing potential charges against them. It is difficult in terms of the investigations because we have to, in order to bring charges, we have to catch the person in the act of illegal dumping, whether or not in person or on camera. So we physically have to see them taking items from the back of a vehicle and putting them onto the ground. We have to be able to make a positive identity of that person, and also potentially positive identity as it relates to license plate tags on the vehicle that was used. We have around 76 cameras across the city that assist in this effort. And our SIU team, we are out on rotation every day with at least five staff members doing rotation and inspections, as well as an additional, at least two, investigating the SRS across the city that are put in on a regular basis as well. The Special Investigations Unit not only focuses on illegal dumping, but also does focus on other areas that we work in as it relates to our process.
Okay, Stephanie, can you go ahead and just...
Yeah, sorry. I don't know what's going on with the technology today. I think Alice was going to say that they're also involved in the prosecution of illegal dumpers, which can result in a variety of charges. And I think we're ready for the next slide. Okay. So in addition to the work of our Special Investigations Unit, we also have responsibilities that our homeowners have to making sure we keep our city clean. So our code enforcement team is also, also investigates residential trash violations. And we thought this would be a good opportunity to highlight what some of those things are because oftentimes when someone calls into 311, and as the Director explained in the previous presentation, reports of illegal dumping can be routed a number of ways. But code enforcement investigates residential trash violations. These can be things like trash cans not having the proper storage container with a tight-fitting lid, bulk items stored outside, high grassed weeds, pest control, and animal waste. So these are under Deputy Commissioner Booker and his shop, and his inspectors are in the field responding to 311 requests every single day. And also, if appropriate, issuing notices and citations. Citations can range from $50 to $100, and can also at times include court action and cleanup costs. Alice, I see you're back. If there's anything you want to add to this slide.
No, that's good. Thank you, Stephanie. My apologies for the internet connection issues this morning.
I think we're ready to go on to the next slide. Okay. We have, DHCD provides through not only our social media, but to community meetings and hard copies of these variety of educational outreach materials. We have a dump, our Dumping is a Crime Guide. We have our Code Enforcement Guide, and we also have our Sanitation Guide, which were developed in conjunction with the Department of Public Works. So these are items that are available on our website, that we share through social media. As I said, we provide at community meetings, educating people on the actual parts of the code that are related to sanitation. So those are some examples of some of the things I spoke of previously that are in the International Property Maintenance Code, like bulk trash and lawn maintenance, exterior sanitary maintenance as well. So we, I encourage everyone on the council to share these with your community associations and help us get the word out on this joint effort. Okay? I think we're ready for the next slide. In collaboration with the Department of Public Works, we have created an educational video that we'd like to share with the Committee, and also encourage that you share this video as well. If you could start that for us. Thank you. I'm not sure what's going on with the sound. Maybe I'm going to have to narrate, but this is an example of us working in conjunction with the Department of Public Works. After our Special Investigations Unit goes out and investigates a site, it will oftentimes be referred to the Department of Public Works to actually do the cleaning. This is an example of some of the criminal penalties that we spoke of earlier that flashed up on the sign there. All right. Well, you can see our teams out in the field working hard. Right. Well, that's about it for that video. Again, I apologize for the technical difficulties. We just have one last slide here, and I'll turn it back over to Alice for any closing remarks.
No, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide information this morning. Once again, my apologies for the internet connection. As you can see, our team works in conjunction with DPW to respond to illegal dumping complaints, as well as addressing residential trash issues across the city as well through our code enforcement team. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Commissioner, and thank you, Stephanie, as well. We're going to move on to the Department of Public Works.
Yes, good morning, Chairwoman. This is Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. And I have joining me today Yvonne Moore Jackson and Kristin Oldendorf from Solid Waste, and of course, Janelle Mummy of my office. And we're going to have just a few slides to present, and Nina has graciously accepted to share the screen because I'm not very good at it. So again, I just want to remind everyone that Yvonne Moore Jackson, who's our Chief of Operations, and Kristin Oldendorf, Chief of the Office of Support and Services, are here today to help answer any questions the Committee may have. I just want to note that our brand-new Acting Director, Jason Mitchell, joined us yesterday, and he's experiencing his first Board of Estimates meeting, so he will not be here today, so you've got me. So if we could go to the next slide, please, Nina. So the Bureau of Solid Waste is responsible for providing locations and resources for residents to dispose of their trash responsibly. And I thank the DHCD presentation for pointing out some of those. And we're also responsible for cleaning streets, alleys, vacant lots where debris is illegally dumped. We also provide multiple services. We gave everyone a municipal trash can, residential trash can with a tight-fitting lid attached to the end with wheels. And we are just getting ready to celebrate the fact that we have a grant, and we'll be able to do the same for recycling containers that will be coming forward. But we also have the five residential drop-off centers, community pitch-in programs, volunteer cleanups that people can register for, and Household Houses Waste Disposal, which just began in April, and various events like paper shredding to encourage people to utilize these services in addition to the curbside collection that we perform so that they have options for taking care of what they want to discard. They can call 311 if they want to register a cleanup event, and we'll provide a collection of the bags of trash that are pulled together. But we ask that residents call at least a week in advance so that we can get them on our schedule. And also, if they register the event, the participants are eligible for credits on their stormwater fee. In addition, we manage the Small Hauler Program, which we had a hearing on last week. And these haulers provide services to residents and businesses, and they are able to dispose of their loads at the Quarantine Road landfill, and more recently, since 2017, at the Northwest Transfer Station for a much-reduced fee. The drop-off centers are very popular with our residents. Sisson Street is by far the busiest, and we average about 6,000 visitors per month during the summer. But unfortunately, despite these opportunities, we still experience a good deal of illegal dumping. Could I have the next slide, please? So this is just a very simple diagram of the process. I thank Lisa for the description that she provided on the 311. Obviously, we have the responsibility, we're the cleanup crews for illegal dumping, which can occur anywhere, in the streets and alleys, on vacant lots, sometimes on the edges of roadways, and in remote areas, and sometimes in our parks, unfortunately. This chart shows the process that the Bureau of Solid Waste uses to address these service requests related to alley cleaning, grass cutting, and boarding. And you see that it's pretty straightforward. On the right is the process that's followed when code enforcement under DHCD steps in. And these are the times when we really want them to do investigations first and make sure that there, if there's any opportunity in which to pursue someone who may have done this, we want them to have that opportunity, obviously. And then, once they're completing their investigation, as they noted, a work order is sent to DPW, and then we begin the process of scheduling for the cleaning. Next slide, please. Okay. Here are some examples of what we see when we arrive. And as Lisa was pointing out in her remarks, there's a lot of ways people can characterize what they witness or what they see in their neighborhood, or when they're moving around within the city. So as we discussed, and as HCD pointed out, really, the disposal of any waste in an area not designated for disposal is considered illegal dumping. And every time someone dumps a bag of trash at the corner can, tires in an alley, construction debris in a park or alleyway, or trash in the yard of a vacant property, this is all illegal dumping. And as you can see by that, it means it affects all of our services across the board. We have crews that, for example, pick up corner cans, but a lot of these corner cans, when they arrive, they find bags of trash and debris put in these corner cans. These corner cans are for routine litter. You go to the store, or you're walking down the street, you have a piece of debris, you put it in the corner can. It's not meant for household trash. It's not meant for business trash. It's there for litter. But when we're there to collect, we have to take it all, and that adds to the burden on the process and the time for our crews to do these services. These photos that you're seeing on the slide are just some examples of the illegal dumping reported as dirty streets, dirty alley for cleaning. And as you can see, some of these are definitely illegal dumping, but they're not reported that way. And so I appreciate the fact that Lisa mentioned how they try to get good information out of the person calling to get a sense of the amount, what it might be, you know, is it just bags of trash? Is there a mattress? Those kinds of things. That's very important, and it helps us, and obviously, it helps HCD to prioritize how they go about responding to these SRS as well for investigations. to prioritize how they go about responding to these SRS as well for investigations. Depending on how the complainant reviews the issue, the illegal dumping could be reported in a lot of ways. And we have categories like illegal dumping, sanitation, illegal dumping, public trash can issue, cleaning, bag pickup, dirty alley, dirty street, park cans, waterway cleaning, and of course, the SIU cleanup notifications from DHCD. So a lot of ways that we can see these reported. Next slide, please, Nina. So obviously, there's always room for improvement, and I think that's what the intent of this hearing is to discuss. We do work hard to encourage our residents to practice responsible waste disposal. And we certainly work hard to clean up illegal dumping. Our goal is to try to reduce the waste that's produced in the first place. We want to provide incentives and opportunities to reduce waste, look for opportunities to reuse and recycle materials. One example could be under construction debris, which we find dumped in alleyways or on vacant lots. If there were incentives to recycle or repurpose more of that debris that would come about as a result of either a major renovation or even a demolition, that would go a long way, because now this material has a value. And as soon as a material has a value, it's no longer waste. It's something of value, and there's an opportunity to reuse it. And that's really the approach of our Less Waste, Better Baltimore Operational Plan. We need to start shifting the discussion of waste to look at how can we look at the material that we routinely throw away. Is there an opportunity here to donate? This could be usable food, or it could be a refrigerator, or a sofa, or a chair. Is there fix-it clinics where you can go and take that small mixer that you have and learn how to fix it and continue to use it? Looking for opportunities to recycle materials. And again, our encouragement of recycling through distribution of recycling containers and carts for our residential folks coming soon will be another way to encourage people to begin looking at their waste differently, pulling out things that don't need to be discarded. We want to we also spend a fair amount of time getting information to residents and businesses on how to practice proper waste management and how you can pitch in to help the community as a whole. And we recognize that we need to continue collaboration opportunities. I think the examples that Stephanie gave for the brochures are one example of how we collaborate with HCD. We have a wonderful program in the Environmental Control Board called Be More Beautiful that is actually educating, teaching, and providing opportunities for youth to learn about how you keep a community clean, what should be trash, what shouldn't be. And those kind of groundroots efforts are always important. And so we are open to all these discussions. I think that the the opportunities are here. I just want to say that we are all very concerned about illegal dumping, but illegal dumping is not the disease, it's a symptom. It is the result of, in many cases, distressed communities who have a lot of vacancies, for example, provide ripe opportunities for illegal dumping. Communities that don't have a strong community association may not have the best way to share information. So I just want to point that out, and we'll be glad to answer any questions as we go forward, and thank you very much.
Marcia, thanks so much. We're going to move on to the Baltimore Police Department. And Michelle, I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Is there anyone else on from the Police Department who can speak while we're working out the technical issues?
Yes, good morning, Councilwoman. I'm on Lieutenant Colonel Brown from Baltimore Police Department. How are you today?
I'm doing great. How are you doing, Lieutenant Colonel? It's great to see you here.
Yes, ma'am, good to see you as well. I'm doing well. I know that Michelle is having some issues, so I can jump in if that's okay.
So did you want to stand by the report that you guys submitted? Or are you able to speak about just how the Police Department addresses illegal dumping?
I have not seen our full report, so I mean, I could just speak in general on how we responded, and Michelle can jump in with our report that we submitted, if that's okay.
Okay. That's fine.
I know that one of the questions is, are we involved in enforcing some of the laws and some of the ordinances around illegal dumping? Even though we are not at this point, we do play a role in ensuring, of course, that our streets and alleyways are clean and free of debris, because we recognize the importance of how that blight affects our community, of course, with stigma, criminal discord, violence, and health and safety of the overall community. And research has shown us that where there is crime, where there's crime, there's crime. But our offices do face difficulties during their patrols. If they aren't able to get down through alleyways, or it compromises our response to incidents if those areas that's traveled are blocked or impassable due to large amounts of debris. And if they have to walk, or if they are engaged in foot chases through these areas impacted by large debris, it becomes not just a safety concern, the trips and falls, but also safety concerns if there's needles that's discarded inappropriately, glass or other materials that can cause injury. And one of those ways that we will be addressing illegal dumping from an equitable lens of public safety is going to be through our community policing plans, but more intimately in our neighborhood policing plan. And in our upcoming community policing training, we're going to be training our offices the importance of their role in reporting locations that has environmental issues and concerns that impacts overall public safety, but also the health of the community that requires the aid of city services by ensuring that through that training, we are teaching them how to enter these issues, concerns that they do recognize and identify through the 311 app. So that's going to be a really big tool for us in focusing on that. So the biggest goal through the community policing plan is that we want all of our offices, including our detectives, if they recognize and identify some of these concerns during their investigations, that they are also engaged in these community policing efforts and helping us identify where those needs are and making sure that we are being proactive in addressing them. Again, through the 311 app, I think, is the best way for us to have some continuity in how we're making sure that we are making notification that is a need here. Not to say community is not doing that, but we want officers to be playing more of a proactive role in that way. Maybe they see an event as well that maybe need to be boarded, those things. So we'll really be pressing down on that. And then, in our neighborhood policing plans, we'll be addressing these issues and concerns more collaboratively, with BPD, our city agencies and partners, but more importantly, our community stakeholders. So we will be designing and strategizing plans on how we are going to, again, collaboratively, address these issues and concerns to bring real health and stability to the community. And that may also include some educational campaigns to the community in how we should or should not discard our trash, dump trash, but educate them on, hey, listen, today is our regular pickup day, tomorrow's recycling, on this Thursday of the month, maybe our bulk trash pickup, something in alignment with that. The real goal is just to bring real sustainability, health, and safety to our communities from that lens. So we do know that with the research, it shows us that areas that has been heavily invested in in beautification and cleaning and upkeep, we have less criminal activity, we don't have many incidents. And in our areas where we have seen illegal dumping in recent incidents, we have made some submissions of those to say, hey, listen, we have a large amount of whatever it may be, and have been submitting those 311 requests, because we do experience more criminal activity there and some more violence. So it is some correlation to that. But the overall strategy that we are proposing and that we will be going forthcoming, definitely through training is the first, and we are beginning our community policing training now, is having our officers more actively engaged, not riding by when they recognize and see that these concerns exist, but taking a proactive stance and saying, hey, let me make sure that notification is made, and not having that bystandership type of attitude. While the community lives here, I'm sure someone else has put in a request, a service request to have this area cleaned or whatever. So that's probably, I think, it would give us great wins and have officers, too, more understanding of investing in our community and not just saying, hey, we're there just for one purpose, which is, of course, public safety, but to also have them engaged in recognizing how much healthier we can take some role in making sure our communities are a lot invested in.
Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel. Madam Chair, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I'm so, so very sorry. Thank you, Lieutenant Colonel, for jumping right in.
It's okay. Looks like this is the day for technical issues. We're fine.
Sorry.
Okay, did you have anything to add to what the Lieutenant Colonel stated? Okay.
No, she was in there. But I will say, for the record, Michelle Wortsbrooke, Director of Government Affairs for the BPD, thank you for having us here to participate in this hearing today, Madam Chair. Also, I just want to say thank you to Councilman Torrance for your leadership on this issue. We stand ready to be an active participant. It will take all of us to actively engage and take ownership over these issues. It's not just the illegal dumping that will have impacts or has impacts on the look of a community and the feel of whether or not that community is safe, but it's also lighting, it's overgrown vegetation that covers people's cameras, it covers lighting. So then it does contribute actively to the lack of public safety and the perception of a lack of public safety. So we definitely want to participate in that. And as we have come before this committee and certainly other committees of the council, this department, the Baltimore Police Department, is evolving. We are changing every single day with the adoption of new policies, with the implementation of training modules. We are definitely changing our view on what our responsibility is, not only to the council, but certainly to the residents we are sworn to protect and serve. So thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to talk about this this morning.
Thank you both. We're going to go ahead and move on to the Office of Performance and Innovation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, Dan Heimowitz from the Office of Performance and Innovation. So just, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here to talk about this important issue. Just a little bit about our office's role with respect to illegal dumping. OPI and the part of OPI that I'm mainly speaking about here today, Citystat, is there to use data to monitor how the city is delivering services and responding to issues such as illegal dumping. So the area where this illegal dumping is covered in terms of OPI and Citystat's work is through a meeting that we have recently relaunched called Cleanstat. And this is a performance management meeting focused on the work of the various city government agencies, including those here today that are responsible for cleaning efforts in the city. We're mainly in that with respect to the illegal dumping, looking at some of the 311 service requests, areas that pertain to illegal dumping. I was glad earlier that my colleague from the Department of Public Works referenced all of the ways that things that, in practice, are illegal dumping come into this 311 system. And so in the Cleanstat meeting, we're trying to look at the variety of those 311 requests and the way and how efficient and equitably we're responding to those requests so that we can understand cleaning efforts across the board. So just to say, it's maybe less straightforward than it seems because of those different ways that things that are in effect illegal dumping come into the system end up being reviewed. So that's how we think about it in that Cleanstat meeting. We are, this is one of a number of cleaning issues that are being reviewed through the Cleanstat process. And I should note that in addition to the agencies here today, we're really looking at a sort of whole-of-government response. So other agencies that have responsibility for different aspects of cleaning are also at the table for those conversations as well. For example, the Department of Transportation, related, for example, mowing of median. So Cleanstat is a broader, more collaborative effort than it's been to date. And so we think that's going to be, hopefully, really effective in terms of making the city cleaner, including helping respond to illegal dumping. And just to say, if there are new strategies related to illegal dumping that were to come out of this process, we would be really interested to agree on ways to measure and use data to consider the effectiveness of those strategies. So again, Cleanstat being a key area or key venue for where and how we can consider these issues and potential new strategies that may come out of this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to recognize that committee member Councilman Bullock, he has joined. We're going to go on to the Health Department at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee, DePaul Nibber, on behalf of the Baltimore City Health Department. We do stand by our report, and I just want to kind of expand a little bit upon that. As our colleagues over at the Department of Housing and Community Development mentioned, the process of really pursuing these illegal dumping cases is very, very involved. It's very resource-intensive and involves cameras. It involves constant vigilance. And within the Health Department, we have four ecology enforcement officers. So these are folks that are tasked with doing everything from routine inspections at two establishments, school cafeterias, to enforcing ordinances around indoor smoking. So they have a very large amount of duties right now. And so they simply don't have the capacity to do exactly what housing does. And for that reason, they can't really be a part of the enforcement effort around legal dumping. So I just wanted to explain where we are as the Health Department on this particular subject matter. Although we do agree with all of our colleagues here that this is a serious issue that's faced by our communities, and it is certainly something that we would like to seek curbed in some way or another. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, DePaul. Last, we have the Law Department.
Hello, Madam Chair. The Law Department stands by its report in approving the resolution for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay, thank you so much, Hillary. So we're going to open the floor to our committee members for questions. Committee members, please signal or use the raise hand function if you have a question for an agency. I'm going to start. My questions are going to be around the education aspect. We've heard about this through the hearing for Councilwoman Porter's bill, for Councilman Z. Cohen's bill, where we talked about education, outreach to stakeholders, to our constituents. outreach to stakeholders, to our constituents. We also just saw, um, a few pamphlets, some documents from DHCD. Um, what I want to know is the educational outreach that we've already embarked on through various agencies, have there been any statistical changes in illegal dumping after embarking or starting those educational campaigns? I also want to know how are we tracking how effective these campaigns are? And that can be for DHCD, it can be for DPW as well, because I know that the bulk of the campaigns are coming from your agencies. Thank you.
Um, again, Madam Chair, Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. Um, we have within, as you know, we have within our agency, uh, community liaisons who work with our, uh, our Office of Communications and Strategic Alliances. Um, they, um, obviously pre-COVID, were routinely attending, uh, community, um, meetings and, uh, providing information, bringing brochures with them, um, just talking in general about responsibilities, uh, taking complaints and concerns. Um, and I know that our Office of Community, uh, Communications and Strategic Alliances, it's helpful, has been working very hard on social media to reach out to people who maybe are more approachable in that manner and who may not be routinely attending their community association meetings. Um, we've also been working closely with, uh, community leaderships to see what they feel would be helpful. Um, we hold a number of events, um, that people attend, uh, for other reasons, like the shred events, um, the, um, when we had the recycling drop-off centers during, um, our, our suspension of curbside services. We made sure our employees who were stationed at that location had information about how to recycle right, talked to people about what was good to do and not do. That was a great opportunity to reach out to people directly who we might not have reached otherwise. Um, we have also done specific campaigns on, um, the, um, what we were doing. For example, under the municipal trash can, we, we spent a lot of time pushing that and talking about how you correctly dispose of your waste. Um, the recycling cans provide another opportunity for us to talk about that and how repurposing and reusing is a good approach to use. Um, we're going to have an anti-contamination grant that will be, um, following the distribution of the recycling cans that talk about what is and isn't recyclable and why. Um, so we do a lot of those, but I, I do not, I do not believe we're seeing any meaningful or measurable reduction in illegal dumping. Um, I think that, um, we, you know, we certainly provide opportunities for people to bring their materials. Uh, we provide, you know, a, a small hauler locations. Uh, we have a, a landfill that is, um, has a tipping fee that is below any of the surrounding jurisdictions. It's, it's, um, I think that what we need to think about is how do we reach out to, um, those folks who might be tempted to do illegal dumping? And, um, look at that from a, both in, in origin, like I'm a business and I hire somebody to haul something away. Um, make sure you're using someone who's licensed to do so. Um, and then the other side of that coin is, um, how do we make sure that someone who collects the material is actually disposing of it appropriately? And that gets at how people, uh, use their manifests, uh, how we check to see where people are, are bringing their materials, say from, um, maybe a construction zone or whatever. Uh, so there's a lot of ways to tackle it. I, I don't know that we have seen any dent in the illegal dumping. It's still occurring. Um, but again, we're hopeful that the waste diversion approach to managing waste will begin to make a dent into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Marsha, are you guys tracking in any way after these, we start these educational campaigns, um, after our liaisons are going to the community association? And I'm just going to say, if that's it, that's, for me, that's not enough. Most of my communities are not going to the community association, so we're not being touched. We're not touching enough people that way. But are we tracking in any way when we do the educational campaigns? Is there an impact or is there a drop in illegal dumping? Or is there, are you guys cleaning up less waste on the DPW side? Are we, do, are we tracking that from that, from your agency?
Um, I think for, uh, focused campaigns, there have been measurements that are done. For example, the, the anti-contamination grant that we have has, uh, matrices that we have to track. We're hoping to see, uh, changes in people's behavior. Um, I think behavioral measurements are challenging. Uh, and, um, I agree that not everyone, uh, attends their community association meetings and those are the hard people to get. I do know that our liaisons have done door-to-door efforts as well. Um, I, I think that, um, it would be great if citizens, um, felt the need to report information that would be helpful to HCD, for example, um, to, to get at the, um, the root of how you hold someone accountable for that action. I think right now there, there is a low percentage of, uh, reported illegal dumping that yields any meaningful information to pursue or find a, um, a culpable party. Um, and I think there is, uh, people will call about illegal dumping, but I think sometimes people feel uncomfortable, uh, offering up information because they feel they may be asked to, you know, go to a court case or testify. Um, and, uh, so I think that some of these matrices are difficult to measure. One of the things we're looking at with OPI is the possibility of, of analyzing some of the, um, data that we get just photographically for sites to see if we can look at the preponderance of one type of illegal, illegal dumping over another and then see if there is a way to craft an approach that might directly address that particular type of illegal dumping. And I think that kind of approach, um, you know, in coordination with HCD and, and Police Department and so on, uh, could actually have a measurable impact, uh, something you could measure. Would you see a reduction, say, if it was construction debris? Could we, if we were reaching out to all these companies that perform these services, um, are we beginning to see a reduction in that aspect? It's, it's hard to measure the overall impact of the variety of dumping that happens. But I think if you look at the different types of illegal dumping, um, you have an opportunity to look at strategies that might work, uh, to begin to narrow that focus.
Thank you, Marsha. Um, Commissioner Kennedy, can you speak to, to any educational outreach that DHCD has done? I know that every event that we do, we're passing out the pamphlets. Some of them are old pamphlets, but it still has good information and the same information within it. Um, have you guys seen any change, um, after you embark on these educational outreach opportunities, um, in illegal dumping, in citations? Um, can you speak to that, please? Thanks.
I can. Thank you. Um, and I would say that we do not have any official statistics on, um, tracking and being able to see a, a, a change in illegal dumping based on those educational efforts through the pamphlets or social media posts. I do know that, um, I believe we have, had started during COVID to work with, um, OPI on a, on a new flyer and then that would also potentially would work with OPI to also assist with, um, tracking in terms of data through Clean Stat as well. Um, we do know, um, that we anecdotally can see and have seen, um, improvements when there's a combination of both the city and the community working, um, you know, door-to-door and having kind of that one-on-one, um, peer education component. We know, um, you know, through different behavioral studies scientifically and the basis of community-based social marketing, that across the country there have been successful campaigns that, um, bring in community peer-to-peer communication where you can have, um, the most impact. And I feel that this is an area that, like my colleagues, I would say that, um, as a city agency and in conjunction with my fellow agencies, that we can improve upon and look to prove, improve upon in terms of a cohesive approach, um, that we would all take together. I think that we need to be working together on the educational components to be able to achieve, um, exponential benefits, uh, from educating the public as, in regards to illegal dumping as well as residential trash management.
Thank you. I'm going to, um, get to the sponsor, um, Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to Marsha for highlighting that you guys are considering building another transfer station. Um, it was one of the questions that I have for you guys because one of the things I've heard from haulers and persons who are in this work, they're trying to, they're trying to make sure they have long wait times in terms of actually dumping the materials. And then I look forward to our meeting in the coming week regarding, um, how do we capture those persons and information for those who do renovations in their homes so that we don't see residential, um, renovation materials actually in our streets anymore? But the questions I have for you guys are more so logistical because what I have are issues in my district where a number of SRS where there was a referral made or a referral not made and then there was no cleanup by DPW because they weren't aware of it or another agency wasn't aware of it. So one of the things, my first question is, are you guys amenable to embedding persons from SEIU? I think your Special Investigations Unit into a DPW pilot where they would go out with a DPW team to investigate and have a cleanup simultaneously, as you saw on your video? Because this shows a clear conversation that I, the public will see. Not only is there an investigation taking place, but also there's a cleanup taking place at the same time. So that means close means close on both ends for both agencies and the public feels more, and I say this, it builds their confidence in that we can get the job done. That's my first question for you guys.
Uh, Councilman Torrance, um, thank you for that question. I would say that, um, we would be open to, um, exploring that option. At this point, my instinct, um, would say that, at this point, we wouldn't necessarily have the, um, staffing capacity to, to do that and it could, um, slow down our operations across the city. But I am willing to have that conversation with my DPW counterparts, um, to explore that option.
Thank you. Um, also with DPW, the same question for you guys because one of the things I'm looking at is we have an opportunity with federal funds coming in to be innovative. And if capacity is an issue, let's have those conversations about how we rev up the capacity, not only your side, but also on the DPW side and think innovatively. Because this is an opportunity to make an investment to change not only our processes, but service delivery. So, Marsha, Merci.
Thank you, Councilman, and, uh, thank you, Commissioner. Um, we are always willing to discuss how we can, um, collaborate on these efforts. Uh, what you're outlining is, is a resource-intensive approach. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm just saying that resources, additional resources would have to be involved. Um, and, uh, I think that some of the funding that may be coming from the federal government, um, if we start an initiative, we also have to make sure we can continue the initiative. Um, and, uh, I think what you're offering up is, is an interesting concept and we're always happy to talk to HCD about how that might be possible. Um, but I do believe it would require additional crews. Um, that's not to say it's impossible. Um, and I think that, um, you know, we'd be happy to, um, have further discussions and, um, you know, get back to you on, on what we think it might, um, require from a resource perspective.
Perfect. Um, I just want to make a note for the committee that I think we should recess to actually have that conversation again for this piece of it. But also, my next question is, there's a program that I know from the fact that experienced homelessness in Baltimore City at one time that where we could, because I'm seeing a lot of bulk furniture that's being left out from evictions, whether they're legal or illegal. Um, is there a way that we can store those actual furnishings that we find in our, in our cleanups and hold them for persons who either experience homelessness or have been evicted or even if we found them, so that we can repurpose them? Um, one of the things I'm finding is that that's a large number, a large portion of some of the legal dumping that's happening not only in my district, but Councilwoman Porter's district and Councilman Bullock's district.
Um, again, Marsha Collins, DPW, I'm, I'm going to start the response and I'm sure HCD may want to have, and/or Health or others. Um, the eviction chattel, uh, issue, um, was a very difficult one. Um, years ago, uh, it used to be okay, um, when someone was being evicted to have the sheriff office come and they, uh, serve the eviction warrant. They take one item out and put it at the curb and then either the landlord or someone else would bring everything else to the curb. Uh, and these evictions were, uh, upsetting for obviously the families and were upsetting for the community because there was a lot of eviction just being automatically at the curb. So a number of years ago, um, there was, um, a change in the law that said you could not place, you know, you cannot block the right-of-way with these materials, um, but that the landlords were required to provide storage for a period of time and then if, uh, they were not collected, uh, they could dispose of them. Years ago, we did do a brief storage, uh, opportunity, but for a lot of these families, they neither have the truck nor the, the transport or may not even know where they're going next. And so I think out of all the storage that we did at the time, there was an extremely low, less than 1% of those materials were recovered. Um, right now, um, landlords are supposed to store for a period of time and then they may remove it. And I believe, uh, the law says that, uh, if they can show their eviction notice, they can dispose of the materials for free. So they don't, we tried to look at all the ways in which to stop putting these materials in the street. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure how well that's functioning under, uh, the landlord responsibility portion. But I know for us as a collection, it was very difficult, uh, at that particular period of time. It was, um, emotional for our people to go to the site and pick up these materials. Many times people were upset and angry and they directed it at our solid waste workers. Uh, and, uh, you know, it's a very hard issue to deal with. So, uh, I'm concerned about the storage aspect because I know in the past it didn't work well for us. We just ended up moving the materials multiple times. I think, um, obviously having opportunity for more housing alternatives, obviously, um, is something the council is working hard on and that's really the root issue here. People just don't have the, the money, uh, to be able to afford much of the housing, um, to, to house themselves and their family. So, I mean, that's the root cause and, and the eviction chattel is the result of it. I, I don't know, I, I have, um, it, it, it has been a very difficult topic to address from our perspective.
Yeah, Marsha, uh, thank you so much. Um, my last follow-up is one of the things, because I know with the prior question, my mind goes back to your current staffing capacity. Can you provide me with, well, the committee with an idea of what your current staffing capacity is? And also, what would you need to do if you want to embed persons in not only solid waste, but also what additional crews you would need in recruitment? You need to do that too. Because one of the things is that if we're going to be innovative, I want to at least have a dollar amount attached to it. But also, what is the capacity level? Because one of the things I noticed from the last hearing that we had, that there were 38 new positions added to the Bureau of Solid Waste, but that was after downsizing from 116 positions. So my question, when I think about it in my head, you have been funded at the level of service delivery, but not at the capacity of delivering said service. So I just want to make sure from not only the solid waste side of it, but the housing side of, are we meeting with the capacity levels that you guys need to do your job well? Thank you.
Um, so I'm going to, um, ask Yvonne Moore Jackson to talk a little bit about capacity. You are correct, Councilman. You are correct, Councilman, in that discussion prior. We did have a conversion of what we call SMA, seasonal maintenance workers. We had positions for 100, but we were given permission to create full-time. Positions with benefits and transferring those people. And unfortunately, when you do that, we could only, out of the 100 slots, we could only fill 30. To make that transition. Now, that was 30 meaningful jobs for the people who transitioned. But it was, you know, a significant drop from what was had budgeted for the SMAs. So Yvonne, do you want to say a few words about capacity and maybe what we could supply after the hearing is over?
Yes, good morning. Yvonne Moore Jackson, Chief of Operations for the Bureau of Solid Waste. Right now, we are currently for illegal dumping, the crews that we have that combat illegal dumping. 11 dirty alley crews, eight street crews, one SIU cleanup crew. Eight cleaning crews and the cleaning crews clean vacant properties, vacant lots and mow vacant lots. And three boarding crews. So that's what we're working with right now. We would need additional resources. But it's something that I would have to get back to you on, you know, dollar amounts and things like that. But this is our current staffing right now. The positions that Ms. Collins spoke of were for routine services. And they are the employees who collect the trash and recycling. So it's a different service than what we're speaking of today.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a similar question to follow up here with Yvonne. Hi, Yvonne, how you doing today?
Good morning. I'm great.
Councilman Torrance reminded me about when talking about expand, you know, the. The discussion about adding another drop off center for small haulers. A couple of years ago, and I think that, you know, that is probably more than that, we had issues where. One, one of the challenges with the lines at the small hauler and the citizen drop off centers. Was, has been about cans being full and not having enough. CDL drivers to move cans from one center. To empty it at Quarantine Road and then get a new empty can back to one of these facilities. And I happened to look last night at the. The city's job listings online and noticed that there's like a continuous or revolving listing for CDL drivers, level one and two. And I noticed that the range of pay on those jobs. I think one was like 38,000 to 42,000 and the other one was like 42,000 to 48,000. But I did a search online and found that, you know, said that the average pay for a CDL driver in Maryland is $60,000. And I remember that part of the reason why. We had kind of a shortage of CDL drivers is that people basically say we weren't paying competitively. In order to be able to attract them and retain them in these kind of positions. And so I'm just wondering where we're at present in terms of vacancy in the available positions. And just general capacity for moving solid waste with the containers. As may be necessary in order for these operations to run smoothly.
So we can provide you with the vacancy report. In the, in the near future. But yes, we do have vacant CDL drivers. We're actively recruiting. We had interviews last week and we also had interviews last month for a CDL driver. Out of the interviews last month, we, we have five CDL drivers that are going through the hiring process. They've passed the interview and they're going through the, getting the physical and things like that. We, like I said, we had interviews last week and those people, hopefully we'll hire a few more. And they will go through the interview process. But yes, we do have vacancies at the transfer station. The drop off centers and, but we are managing. If you, if you go to Sisson Street nowadays, you'll see that the line is moving pretty quickly. We're, we're managing that operation with the limited resources that we have.
You're referring there to the, the people that are like boots on the ground at the center rather than the CDL driver. I'm just asking about the CDL drivers.
Yes, we do have vacancies there and we are actively recruiting for those vacancies.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I like to, I'd be interested to know, I guess I'd probably also like to know. What our rate of retention is in those positions. Again, because I'm also concerned about that pay scale disparity between what we are offering. And what seems to be the state or regional average.
Now, we don't, we don't have a high turnaround in with the convenience center, the tractor trailer drivers, the roll off drivers. We don't have a high. Turnover rate there. Our turnover rate is in routine services. That's the collection of trash and recycling. The employees who drive the load packer. So that's where we have our biggest turnover.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. And just one last thing. I know that. You know. Solid waste collectors are often just so underappreciated for the incredible, incredibly important and valuable service that they provide to folks. The council, this, this city enacted its tax credit for. I'm sorry, this is a little bit off topic, but I just wanted to mention it. Tax credit for low paid city employees. For the, for the 25% lowest paid employees of the city. Has DPW done much outreach to ensure that, that it's, you know, qualifying workers. Are aware that they are or maybe qualified for that tax credit? Just want to make sure that we're doing everything possible to, to, to make sure these workers have reason to stay with the city.
I'm gonna defer that to Marsha. I'm, I'm not aware of that program. So I'm gonna defer to Marsha.
I don't know if there's been anything in particular provided to our, our employees. And I can check with our HR department, Councilman. Thank you for bringing that up. The other issue, and I, I don't know if Nina knows this or not, but I thought we had gone through HR to increase. What we pay our CDL drivers to try to be more competitive. I thought that went forward. I think the challenge is, Councilman, we are always behind the going rate. There are.
Yeah, that's, I, I thought that there had been some effort in that, you know, in that also. But that's why I was very surprised to see, you know, ranging from 12,000 to $22,000. Below the state average.
Yes, and I will tell you that we are not, government is not the only entity that's struggling to get drivers. There is a lot of competition out there right now for these drivers in, in the private sector as well. So unfortunately. We may do what we can to change the scale, but private industry is always going to beat us every time. But we will double check, sir. And thank you for bringing up the other issue about the housing.
Thank you, Marsha.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're gonna move very quickly to Councilman Cohen. He's not a committee member, but he does have to leave shortly. He's been waiting patiently. Then we're going to go to Councilman Bullock. We're going to go back to Councilman Bullock. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Appreciate the courtesy and thank you to all my colleagues and the agencies. I thank you especially to the bill sponsor on this as well. Listen, I appreciate the work of all the agencies on this call. We know that your work is hard and often thankless. But as a city, we are failing on this issue and that's on all of us. It is incredibly depressing to live in a community that's treated like a dumping ground. Illegal dumping leads to toxic stress and all kinds of health problems. Illegal dumping disproportionately harms redlined, disinvested neighborhoods, not so much wealthier ones. We heard at a prior hearing that there was a massive backlog of illegal dumping requests. We hear anecdotally and see with our own eyes that dumping is endemic in neighborhoods across our own city. I wanted to begin by reaffirming what the bill sponsor, Councilmember Torrance, said about shifting some of the capacity. Of enforcement into DPW so that it becomes a one-stop shop. Because I think what I often see, what we see is a 311 gets called in. And there's just a lot of confusion between agencies about is DHCD supposed to go out? Is housing supposed to go out? When does one happen? When does the handoff occur? And I just think the system as it currently exists is incredibly inefficient and has resulted. You know, the results are just generally not good. And then, and again, it's not a critique of the folks who go out there. We know they're working extremely hard. But it is to say that my understanding is in prior administration.
We're so thankful for your remarks. Is there a question, sir?
Question is, what would it cost to stack the deck with enforcement in DPW? Instead of going through a separate agency? To fill the backlog that we know exists?
Thank you, Councilman, for your question. I think we would have to get back to you on a cost because I'm not prepared to speak to that. We did many years ago have an enforcement team. It was shortly after the Environmental Control Board was created and we were issuing the environmental. If you could bear with us, if we could get back to you with a.
This is Janelle Mummy with DPW. Councilman Marsha appears to have some technical difficulties on this day of rain. We will be sure to get back with you with that answer because we don't have it right.
I'm sorry, Councilman, for that interruption.
No, no worries. Would appreciate that info. Just for the record, to Director Kennedy. Would you be amenable to the enforcement shifting to the Department of Public Works? Or some of the enforcement?
Yeah, I think that that would be something that we could discuss and review. As of now, you know, we respond to the SRS as well as the proactive investigation. And submit the, you know, and submit the clean, the cleaning request to DPW directly through 311. There are currently, right now, just to give an idea, there are 97 open SRS. And the, and 50 are new that just have come in between 5/4 and today, which is within the last 24 hours. And our staff will be out doing that investigative, investigative process. I think that I would want to have a better idea too on what the desired outcome is on that because. DPW is responsible for doing the cleanup. We do the investigative piece and are actively, you know. Completing that. So I think it's just a matter of talking more about exactly where, whether or not there are actual and or. Potentially perceived breakdowns in that communication and how best to do that. So.
Desired outcome is efficiency and it being a one-stop shop so that the complaint can both get abated and cleaned up. All at once instead of people having to continue to wait. Last question for me. People dump a lot of times because they don't know about bulk trash pickup. We know bulk trash pickup is currently suspended. But what efforts are we making to inform the public of using bulk trash pickup? And could we have a system like a lot of cities do where there's just a day where neighbors can put out their bulk trash? And get it picked up? It seems the current system again is, isn't, isn't working great. That's for DPW.
Okay, I'm gonna try to start responding and then I'm gonna hand off to Yvonne. If you're talking about just a day when everybody can put it out, I think that would be a resource issue. But the current problem we're having right now under the suspension is just, again, getting at Councilman Dorsey's issue. We've been using drivers for that particular service to stand up our routine services. So that's the reason for the current interruption of services. I would like also, in addition to what you're suggesting, point out that. Our remarks earlier and conversations earlier about waste diversion and providing opportunities to. Take those type of bulky items and see if there is a useful purpose for them rather than, you know, the disposal, which I know. You know, that's a kind of a slightly off topic from what you're presenting, but I think those have opportunities as well for us. Yvonne, could I ask if you would have anything more to add to help with the Councilman's question?
The only thing I have to add, we, we send citizens to the drop off locations. They're allowed to. Take all of their residential items to one of the drop off locations, the landfill or the transfer station. So that's what we're asking residents to do right now while the bulk, while bulk is suspended.
Got it. Thank you. Again, we just asked for us to try to improve dual language or multi-language communications around bulk trash pickup. Because I think many families in our city don't know that it exists and don't know how to access it. Again, really want to thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me jump in. Thank you to all the agencies and really look forward to the follow-up from this hearing.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. For Councilman Cohen's request, can we just make sure that we're for Janelle or Marsha? That we're providing that to the committee? I know that we're waiting on some items from DHCD from a previous hearing. Particular requests from Councilwoman Porter, but can we also just make sure that these items are also furnished to the committee? Councilman Bullock?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And my question is also around bulk trash, so I apologize if some of this is already covered. But obviously, you know, our colleagues, myself included, you know, dealing with all the mattresses and couches and all those items that we see. Littered in our alleyways and on our corners. And I do understand that bulk trash has been suspended due to limitations, resource issues. My question essentially is, do you have a timeframe or an idea in which it may be resumed? I just want to be able to manage folks' expectations in the community because literally we get these questions in terms of when will this be available? And also want to highlight the point that many of our residents don't have access to a vehicle and so the drop off issue is a big challenge for them. So if you could just talk about the potential timeframe, any idea that you may have in terms of when that may be resumed?
I'm going to respond just in general and Yvonne can add anything she knows. Right now, as we, we just mentioned, it is an issue of resources and we're standing up routine services. So if we are successful in fulfilling some of those positions that Yvonne talked about earlier for drivers. That may give us the flexibility then to resume. It is my understanding that bulk trash is in our FY '22 budget. So it's, you know, as soon as we can stand up our operations, it's hard for us to give you a time. soon as we can stand up our operations, it's hard for us to give you a timeline. We want to make sure that these drivers get in and get comfortable and, you know, stay. So Yvonne, is there anything else we can add to that?
No, not at this time.
Well, again, I appreciate that. I mean, hopefully that is something that can resume. So, you know, once you get a better handle on that, you know, please let us know just so we can be able to relay that information to folks as well. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, councilman, and I will just say that for communities that, you know, have a solid community association, you know, we still have the roll off program or the pitch in program where we provide up to four roll offs per community association a year. You know, that's something folks might want to consider, particularly since we've had to suspend. So that's an option, but they need to reach out and give a little bit of time between when they'd like to do that event and requesting it so we can make sure we have the roll offs available.
And thank you for adding that. I'll just reiterate what Madam Chair also said, that many of our communities, the ones that are most disinvested are the ones that tend to not be as connected to their neighborhood associations. So therein lies part of our challenge, but to the extent that we can, you know, continue to connect folks with their organizations, that is an option. So thank you for that.
Okay, and you know, one option would be if, if the council office wanted to host it, I'm sure people would be happy to fill. Thank you.
Good stuff, thanks.
We're going to move to noncommittee members for the cycle. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, DPW and Housing and everybody who's here. I first want to give a shout out to Ms. Yvonne Moore Jackson and her team for always responding very quickly and then sending great photos of how amazingly clean everything is. So I just want to give a shout out. I really think that she and her crew are pretty amazing. Two questions if I may. One is, I have many of the Olmstead medians in my district, 33rd, the Alameda, Lock Raven, and we see dumping there all the time. The issue in my district isn't small haulers. The issue in my district is my own constituents. And so the issue of education is going to be important, but I'm wondering, we had talked a little bit via email about possibly doing cameras and signage on the medians and in other places. Can maybe Ms. Collins or Ms. Moore Jackson or somebody speak to sort of, what are some of the other strategies that we should be using? I know Councilman Burnett also talks a lot about, you know, using, having a camera program in his district. So what are some of these other ideas, these other strategies that we've been using? I didn't hear about in the hearing.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'll start off, Marsha Collins, again from DPW. And thank you for those kind words for Yvonne and her team. They are absolutely hardworking folks and thank yous are always appreciated. I will say that the medians, of course, this is where we get into that whole issue of DOT managing the medians, and I know I saw that email exchange that you had regarding the Olmstead series of medians. And I thought that DOT was going to be checking into the signage. They would be the entity we would go to for signage, but I suspect what might be helpful, I know in that particular instance, they were talking about the bags that were put there after a mowing of the median and people were actually thinking, oh, okay, they're going to come and pick up the grass, so I'm going to bring my grass over to the median because it'll get taken care of. So I think some messaging along that strip probably, door to door, would probably be one of the very first things that we would want to do. I don't know if HCD has anything to add to that.
No, I would agree with what you stated, Marsha, and also I don't know that the cameras that we use are motion activated and so I think on medians it would be difficult to utilize those cameras, but you know, some other camera system could be looked at as well.
Thank you, and also want to thank DPW for your help with launching the pilot project in my district to have Coldstream Homestead Montebello have two trucks and then have trained some workers. And I know we're going through the coordination of all of that, but I do think that going back to the camera issue, there, are there places where even, maybe not in my district, but in other places where you actually have to use a, a, the camera system to try to do a sting, excuse my background noise. So doing, using cameras to try to get a, like I also have a, two big dumpsters near an apartment complex that are overused, not by the people in the apartments. And so, you know, using cameras to try to figure out what's going on and who's dumping. So, you know, what, what's the strategy there?
Um, well, right now, we don't actually point our cameras at private property, so that would be one issue where I don't think that we would be able to do that as it relates directly to the dumpsters on the apartment complex property, but we can look at other ways, you know, to, to address that issue. We also send out, and we also have conversations with landlords and property owners on a regular basis regarding their trash management and can assist them as well if they wanted to install their own cameras and we could always assist with looking at footage or so forth.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, and thank you, Madam Chair, and again apologies for the background noise with virtual school.
It's virtual. Thank you. Councilwoman Porter? Councilwoman, we can't, we can't hear you, but I don't see that you're on mute. You may, okay, so I've been advised that you may need to log off and come back on. We're going to come back to you. Okay. For, for our committee members, we're going to cycle back. And for the viewing audience, thanks so much for your patience regarding all the technical issues that we're having at this time, but we're in virtual. Councilman Torrance, did you have any additional questions for any of the agencies?
Not at this time, Madam Chair, just a few follow ups from earlier. Just want to remind them about those so that they can come to the committee. Thank you.
Okay. And I see a few hands that are still up. Councilman Dorsey, did you have any additional questions?
Nope, my bad, thank you.
Okay, we are going to see if we can give Councilwoman Porter just about 30 seconds. If there's anyone else on the committee who has any additional questions, please feel free to, to jump in. And we've also been joined by Councilman Yitzhak Schleifer. And thanks for your patience. What we'll do is we'll come back to Councilwoman Porter once she's able to get logged back in. And we're going to go ahead and move on to public testimony. The committee staff will call on members of the public who wish to testify and members of the public, you will have two minutes each to provide your testimony. For those who are signed in using their computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify and we will start with you. Next, we're going to go through all of the users who have called into the hearing, attendees who called in who cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by the committee staff one by one. You will hear two beeps when you're unmuted and if you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not wish to provide testimony, you can simply state that you do not wish to testify after the two beeps. And if a speaker is inaudible, you will be directed to call back. Matt Peterson is going to take over from here for the public testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Councilwoman Porter is back on.
And we're going to cycle back to Councilwoman Porter. Thanks, Matt. Councilwoman Porter, if you're there, you can ask your questions whenever you're ready. And we'll come back to you. We're going to go ahead and start public testimony at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do not have any hands raised yet, but we do have one caller. Caller, you're unmuted. Please start your testimony if you'd like to say anything. No response. Madam Chair, it looks like there's no additional public testimony.
So that's going to conclude public testimony. We have Councilwoman Porter back whenever you're ready.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm so sorry about the technical difficulties. Can you all hear me now? Okay, perfect. So I did have a question related to Ms. Collins. You mentioned about the four roll off dumpsters. I'm wondering if that number can be increased, given that bulk trash is pretty inconsistent right now and we're seeing, particularly in District 10, we're seeing, you know, large items, mattresses and other bulk items that can be used, well, that can be kind of like triaged off into these, to these dumpsters. So my question is, can, can we increase the quantity of dumpsters, given that bulk trash isn't consistent?
Thank you for that question, Councilwoman Porter. I'm going to ask, I think it's a matter of the number of roll offs that we can provide at any one time, but I will ask Yvonne to comment.
At this time, it will be difficult for us to increase the number, given that we don't have the resources, the driver resource to get these dumpsters out right now, but it is something that we can look into for the future.
Okay. Madam Chair, may I ask a follow up question?
Of course.
Thank you, ma'am. So, so Ms. Moore Jackson, as far as like the driver, the driver capacity, is there a way that we can, is there an opportunity that we can kind of like stagger those, stagger those dumpsters? I guess I'm not understanding.
So, so right now, each, every day, we have up to 15 pitches. So our calendar is booked pretty much until October. So to add another dumpster at this time, it would be impossible for us to, well, nothing's impossible, but it will be very difficult for us to do that. And then if we add it for your district, then we would have to add it for everyone. We'd have to equally add, increase the amount of dumpsters for the entire city. So we just don't have the resources to do that at this moment, but it is something that we can look at in the future.
Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Before we end, do we have any other questions for the agencies? Okay, so with this issue, we're going to be recessing this hearing so we can come back because this is an issue that's ongoing. We don't want to close it out and then have to reopen up another resolution. So we're going to be recessing. And I want to thank all of the agencies for being with us, my colleagues for your great questions. And the only thing that I would ask out of the agencies is to please just get back with the committee on the request that we did present to you. Everyone have a great day. This hearing is now in recess.